Meeting to order. It's nine o'clock on Thursday, the 19th. And I want to thank everybody for joining us for this, as I say, emergency city council meeting on such short notice. Looks like right now we've got about 25 participants and I think that for the first time Josh has lined this up. So it's streaming on our website and on YouTube and Facebook. So anybody can join in through that medium and don't have to get on Zoom. Just kind of tee this off a little bit on June 28th, you know, the state of Oregon lifted their restriction due to COVID and ended their state of emergency. And if you remember, we followed suit and lifted our mask mandate and our state of emergency here in Manzanita at our July 7th console meeting. And we kind of looked like that this with the vaccinations and everything that the COVID crisis was over. And as we've all noticed, the world's turned pretty much upside down in just the last few weeks. And now we're, we seem to be in a little bit more than a little bit of trouble. So the purpose of this meeting is to determine if we need to go back to a state of emergency and what action we can take to protect our community. This is moving so fast. We felt it was important that we had this meeting before the weekend. And just so we can figure out if there's anything we can do. We've invited three important guests to join us this morning, and I'm not sure if they're all with us or not, but I wanted to give them the opportunity to talk first if they're with us. And we invited Eric Swanson, who's president of Tillamook Adventist Hospital, and Dr. Margaret Steele, who has been helping keep us informed on the COVID trends. And we invited Mary Faith Bell, who's the chair of the Tillamook County Commissioners and a North County resident. And I know everybody's very busy right now. So I don't know if, Eric, were you able to join us this morning?
Hey, good morning. I am here glad to join you.
Oh, great. I appreciate the fact you've taken the time. Could you give us kind of, I heard your update at the community call Tuesday, and obviously you've got a lot of stuff going on at the hospital. Could you give our community an update on where we're at on that and what the status is of your North County clinic, which I know you've closed? And I know you've hired a new medical director who's going to come onboard in a month or so, but just kind of give us an update of where we're at right now.
Sure, I'll give you the kind of the general update and we'll talk some specific Manzanita clinic stuff. And feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have questions. I'm, I'm just so grateful that you're willing to invite me so we can have open dialogue. Today, right now, we have 19 patients in our hospital, one brand new baby. And we have two patients that are boarding in the emergency department. And what that means is when we're boarding a patient, that means they're waiting for a bed to become available. And as soon as those beds become available, they'll become part of the inpatient count that we have. So that would bring us up to 21 patients. Question's been asked that we're a 25-bed critical access hospital. How do you have room for all these patients? And I'll explain that. The 25-bed requirement or limitation is a federal requirement that's simply related to Medicare. When we are in a pandemic like we are today, we have the ability to expand as much as we need to to care for people who need medical care. So we actually, as a hospital, are licensed for 49 beds. And we have plans where we could, if we start tucking people into non-traditional care spaces, we could probably care for 75 people here. But we have to have nursing staff and others to do that. And that's, that's one of our limitations. So we have turned our intensive care unit into a COVID unit. We will be, we're free to report. The privacy official tells me we're free to report that anytime we have more than two COVID patients in the hospital, we can give you a number. But for privacy reasons, if we have two or less, we won't be reporting that number. So today, we have seven patients in the hospital who have COVID, that are sick with COVID. And remember, being sick with COVID is different than a COVID positive test. These are people who actually need hospitalization. So we are actually today going to be expanding the COVID unit on our second floor. And what that means is when somebody has a respiratory illness like COVID, we want them to be in a negative pressure room where the air is vented to the outside so that it doesn't filter throughout the rest of the building. So we're working on making some changes there. We're, we have plans in place to take the surgery pre-op area, which has seven or eight beds available, and turn that into a medical care area if, if it comes to that. Today, it hasn't come to that, so we don't need to do that. But we're working on that. We had six more patient beds delivered yesterday. If you're not aware, Portland hospitals are super full. And I have a report here that I got yesterday from all the Portland hospitals. And for example, Legacy Emanuel has 15 to 20 patients boarding in their emergency department right now. And that is the case all across Oregon and actually into Idaho. Bed availability is a huge problem right now. So just remember, of our 19 patients in the hospital, while seven are COVID, the rest are here for other illnesses and injuries. So while we've, we've got a intense focus on COVID, we still have a lot of people who are here receiving other types of care. To give you an example, I think I shared this on the Tuesday call for those of you who didn't hear it. On Monday, we got a call from a hospital in the Corvallis area and one from Curry General Hospital, Cleardown in Brookings, asking Tillamook to take their patients. That's how dire it is. And we never get calls from other hospitals for us to accept their patients. So that's just an example how a difficult position we are in across Oregon. Yesterday, we had 83 visits to urgent care at the Plaza. The rolling seven-day average is 73. August 1st, the rolling seven-day average was 44. So for the last, with the exception of Friday and Saturday and Sunday, the Plaza has seen more than 80 urgent care patients a day. And I can look out my window right now and see cars out there, people coming in for COVID testing. Emergency department was a little quieter yesterday with only 30 visits, but many of those people are what we consider high acuity, meaning very sick. So if I come in with the sniffles and you come in with chest pain, the chest pain is much higher acuity than my, my issue of sniffles. We have adequate supply of personal protective equipment. And that has always been a concern since the beginning of COVID. And we have a pretty robust supply chain for Adventist Health. So we're good with all of our PPE. We get a daily report on where we're at with personal protective equipment. And we're in good shape there. So elective surgeries, we have stopped doing elective surgeries for this week and next week. However, urgent and emergent surgeries, we still continue to do. The reason we choose not to do elective surgeries is because if a patient who is, has an elective surgery suddenly needs a hospital bed for some reason, we want to make sure that we've got that bed and a staff to be able to care for that person. So we will look every week. So next Wednesday, we will look at the following week's surgery schedule and see what we can, what we should do, what our current census is, and make a decision about the following week. My executive team meets every day at 8:45 and 4:00 PM. And that's including on Saturdays and Sundays. And we are the incident management team for this event. And so we look at staffing, capacity, volumes, surgery cases, other COVID issues that pop up, public communication about these events. And that's one of our, how we keep on top of things. We have adequate Abbott and Cepheid testing supplies today. But let's be real, with the way COVID tests have increased dramatically over the last week or two, we suspect that Abbott and Cepheid and all the other manufacturers are going to run into supply chain issues at some point. So we are, we're having discussions about what do we do with, when we get to that point, which we're just, we're predicting into the future, how we'll manage that. Our ambulance service, you know, we provide ambulance service for the entire county. We had 10 transports yesterday with one transfer to Portland. And any, at this point, any transfer to Portland is a good thing because that says somebody will accept our patient. Visitor restrictions are in place for our inpatients with some exemptions. And we're trying to update information on a daily basis on Facebook in terms of communicating. Manzanita Clinic, we were seeing about six urgent care patients a day at the Manzanita Clinic. So we elected to shift that staff down to Tillamook to help with the huge volume of urgent care patients in Tillamook. We're doing the same thing with our urgent care in Lincoln City. And the good part is, is that, for example, in North County, we have an excellent partner in the Reinhardt Clinic. So urgent care is, can still happen. If you need to see somebody without coming to Tillamook, you can go to the Reinhardt Clinic. And we appreciate them being available. You alluded to, we, as we opened, that we do have a new physician that's coming to Manzanita next month, and that's Dr. Amy Eckelberger. And Dr. Eckelberger specifically chose Manzanita is where she wants to practice medicine. She's an experienced provider and is looking forward to working and living in North County. And she specializes in internal medicine. And so internal medicine is for those of us who have more complicated medical type problems. And we are so blessed to have a female internal medicine physician that wants to practice in Manzanita. That is a huge blessing. So she'll be starting up there next week. I'm sorry, next month. I believe the Manzanita Clinic is either opening today or tomorrow. We now have a temporary provider that will be available there so that we don't have to have it closed. Physicians, providers who are, work for us on what we call a locum's basis or a temporary basis are hard to come by right now across the nation. And I think we have one that is, was out on a leave and is back to work. I will try and leave and ask that question, answer that question, and then give you a follow-up at the end of the meeting to make sure I'm giving you accurate information, if that's okay. So that's kind of just a big picture view. We're ready to, we're ready to care for you. We have lots of resources available. Some of the care may occur in unusual areas of the building, but we have a lot of ability to expand and contract. I have a dozen or so people that report to me. Most of them are non-clinical, but they are all put on notice on Monday that if we need to put them in a non-traditional role, like maybe a runner taking samples from the Plaza to the lab, we may reassign them to do that, even though you're the philanthropy director for the hospital or the wellness director. And so all of my team is ready to jump in where they need to. And in fact, my executive assistant came to me and said this last Friday, I feel like I'm not very helpful. Where can I help in this hospital other than doing my regular day-to-day? So at some point, we may, depending on how COVID goes, we, I am personally following the University of Washington data set. And that data set is predicting that hospital resource use will peak in the state of Oregon, September 6th or 7th, and then be a gradual decline. So that's what we're sort of planning for here. And we make changes every day to try and make things more efficient and ensure that anybody that needs medical care, get that medical care. And we've actually done a couple of urgent or emergent surgeries in the last couple of days. Because people have to be taken care of. So that's kind of the view of my, the world right now from Adventist Health Tillamook. And I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Eric, I appreciate you taking the time to talk to us. Is there anything we can do as a community to help you? Or do you have any suggestions of what we should be doing to protect ourselves during this? Sounds like we're going to have another tough two or three weeks if the models hold up. So.
Yeah, I think there's, there's several things. First, don't delay your medical care. Okay, let's, let's say you have, you have symptoms of something. What we saw from the pandemic first started last year, we had people who delayed getting medical care because they didn't want to come into the hospital because they were fearful of COVID. And we, as a medical community, I'm not saying in Tillamook specifically, there were bad results of that. So first, take care of yourself. Don't delay medical care. If you have serious signs or symptoms, get into the emergency department, get into urgent care and be seen. That's, that's important. On the COVID front, I'm just going to give you a data point. Adventist Health has 25, about 25 hospitals, two in Oregon, one in Hawaii, the rest are in California. Two of our California markets have been hit super hard with COVID patients. So during the, between August 1 and August 12, all the patients that were admitted across Adventist Health, that means they're admitted to the hospital because they were sick enough with COVID to be admitted, 88% were unvaccinated. I'll just leave you with that data point. I think it's an important one. Everybody has a choice there, but that's a data point. If you're considering, if you haven't been vaccinated and you're considering it, we have the ability to get you vaccinated. We, our OcMed is open. You can get an appointment with your primary care provider to get a vaccination. But 88% was what we saw during that 12-day period. And I think that's, that's an important data point. I think we at Adventist Health are doing things like if anybody is in my office with me, I have to wear a mask. We're increasing do, not having meetings in person. So you know, the fewer opportunities to transmit something from friend to friend, coworker to coworker, those are, those are things that we're doing as well. So hopefully that's helpful to you.
Yeah, that's great. Is there any questions from the council before we let the public ask a couple of questions? No question. Any questions from the public for Eric?
I have a question. Yeah, Eric, what is the nursing staffing situation?
Um, we're, I'm going to say we're okay. And on a scale of excellent, really good, good, okay, comes down here. So if you're not aware of this, as a nation, nurses are bailing from the profession for a variety of reasons. So that has impacted us here at Adventist Health Tillamook. It's impacted every one of our Adventist Health hospitals, and it's impacted all of our Portland hospitals as well. We had a Portland hospital reported, I believe it was Legacy Emanuel was reporting that they had 30 openings for RNs working in the emergency department alone. So nurse staffing continues to be a problem. Our nurses are rock stars. I'll just give you an example. With no surgical cases going on, all of the surgery staff has been transitioned into other nursing duties. And they're doing it with, they're showing up with a smile on their face, engaged, we're here to help, you know? And I think that's really at the heart of people who are in healthcare, right? They want to help. And so we're, we're using contract nurses to fill some of our roles. But part of the problem is there is it's a, for some of the contract nurses, it's more about the money. And if you can get $10 more an hour, you're going to bail and go to another hospital so you can get 10 bucks more an hour. There's no loyalty there. And so I'm just so grateful for our staff, nurses, MAs, techs, I don't want to leave anybody out, who are here to serve this community and are in it for the right reasons. So does that answer your question, Dr. Steele?
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Eric before we let him go? Because I, I know you're a busy man right now. We invite you to stay for the rest of our meeting, but you're certainly excused if you have to leave. And I really appreciate you taking this time this morning to give us an update.
Absolutely. What I will do is if it's okay with you, I'll sneak out. And then I'll come back in and turn my camera back on when I have an answer. I want to give you the most current information about Manzanita Clinic. I don't want to leave you with inaccurate information. So.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. That was great.
There, I think Steve has a question. But Steve, your audio is a little muffled. Not really.
How about this microphone?
There you go.
We'll try that. And Eric, I hope you're still here. And my question is, I think as a council, if I were to guess, that we will soon be talking about whether to reimpose certain restrictions like mask wearing and those kinds of things. And even in some cases in an outdoor environment, do you have an opinion about that? And is that helpful to your facility in terms of trying to prevent the transmission of people ending up in the emergency room?
Well, I think clearly we want, I don't want people to get sick, right? And if I lack the expertise to tell you if that really does any good, that would come better from one of our physicians who has some expertise in that area. But I think we need to make decisions about, like, I'll just give you an example. A, I had a meeting yesterday with a group and I went, you know, did my regular, I'm going to shake hands. Oops, nope, we got to do the elbow bump. I'm no, I don't want to transmit what's on my hand to you, even if it's the common cold. And so I think that we need to take every opportunity to reduce, especially right now, reduce any opportunity to transmit this virus because it's particularly difficult. My chief medical officer is telling me this variant is impacting people like the other COVID variants didn't. And if we follow University of Washington data set, we are going to see, we're going to see an increase in hospital usage, hospitalizations and deaths over the next, the next couple of weeks in Oregon. So I, I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I appreciate that. There, if you haven't seen it, there's a very interesting article today in the Times, New York Times regarding the experience that they're having in Israel. And
Oh, yeah.
They were, they were the poster child, if you will, for vaccination. I think their population is somewhere in the 80 percentile in terms of vaccination, but they are struggling right now. And so I worry about seeing that, even though we talk about a September 6 turnaround, I read that and I see those data numbers and it worries me that we may not be as, you know, headed for, headed for the good spot as we might think. It just, it's an interesting article anyway, if you haven't seen them.
Well, I'll take a look at that. And let me just clarify on the, the September 6, 7. That's when they say we reach our peak. However, you know, we went, our, our, our peak is going like this. The decline is much more gradual. And through the end of the year, according to this data set, we would not get to Oregon COVID volumes. By the end of the year, we may get back down to January, February, February COVID volumes. It will not be the, the July, June trough that we saw. So there's, I'm just saying that's when the peak is. We're going to be in this for the long haul, for sure.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions for Eric, thanks again for joining us. I'm going to ask Dr. Steele if she would like to address the group. And do you have some updated COVID numbers you want to show us, Margaret, or?
Yeah, I do. So let me try to share my screen. So can you guys see that?
Yep.
Okay, this is similar to the presentation I gave to the council two weeks ago, but it's updated as of yesterday. So this is, this is our, this is the curve. It's called the Epi curve. And this is just, it, it's not for any details. It's just for, you can see what's happening with the case numbers statewide. And it's just what you already know in a picture form.
Margaret, do you want to hit slideshow at the top? That would do, you can see.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Is that better?
There it is. Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that helpful hint. So basically, I mean, what you're looking at is you're just looking at the slope of that line, which is, looks a lot like the slope of the line from late last year. This is the lineage prevalence for the past six weeks and yellow equals Delta. So it's almost all the Delta variant. And we know that that variant is two plus times as contagious as the Alpha variant, which was two plus times as contagious as the original COVID-19. This is our hospitalization trends by region. We are in region one, and that's the blue line on this graph. And you can see that our hospitalization rates are way up. There's the, the percentage of beds available is really low in region one and everywhere else in the, in the state. So that's what Eric was talking about in terms of it's difficult to find a place to transfer a patient to who is more sick than we can handle, or if we just don't have room. So that's a big deal. This is our, this is a graph. It's, you don't have to look at the details, but this is case rates per 100,000 population by county. Now, obviously, our county only has 25,000 or so people in it. But this is, so they normalize it by doing case rates per 100,000. And we are right here. So we are, can you see that my little cursor there? We are at 505 cases per 100,000. We're not the worst in the state, but we're certainly up there. And that's very troubling. Our test case positivity rate in Tillamook County is a little over 20%. And that's, I believe that's the highest it's ever been. So that's very troubling as well. So we're, we're in trouble in the county and in the state and in the country. I'm especially concerned because the fair just ended. And I know that there was a pretty high prevalence of not wearing masks at the county fair. I go to the county fair pretty often, and I did not go this year. So I'm concerned that we're going to see a bump in the next few days from that. I hope we don't, but I'm concerned we will. So those are, that's the statistics that I have in graphic form. And then what do we do? Well, you know, so this is a little bit different than what I presented two weeks ago. At that time, I talked about masking indoors. And now I'm talking about outdoors in crowded settings as well. So that could include Lenita, I'm busy. I won't say weekends, because it could be anytime, hot day in Portland. Could, and that probably includes the farmer's market. So masking in more places than we had talked about before. Keeping your distance. So even if you are masked, try to keep not right up on top of other people, even outdoors. Washing your hands, obviously. And obviously, it's in red because it's the most important. Get vaccinated if you haven't. Knowing that probably most of the people on this, in this meeting are vaccinated. There is recent news, as of yesterday, that booster doses are, for people who got either the Moderna or the Pfizer vaccine are going to be available probably in late September. The criteria at this point are eight months after your second shot of whichever vaccine you got. And so that means since healthcare providers and older people got vaccinated first last year, that they will be getting vaccinated first for, with the booster shot. That is dependent upon the FDA okaying it and CDC okaying it. And there's a, there's a outstanding question about whether people who got the Johnson and Johnson vaccine are going to be recommended to get a booster. I think the answer is going to turn out to be yes, but the details of that aren't known. And they say that they're waiting for more data. So that's what I have. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Look, you got a question in the chat there.
Do we know how many unvaxxed eligible people we have in Tillamook County? We do. It's our, our, our complete vaccination rate is not very high. It's in the 16% area. And Eric, do you know by chance? percent area. And Eric, do you know by chance?
I was, I was hoping I had that number in top of my head, but I don't.
It's, it's, we have, I think there's like 15, I would, I'm going to say 1500 ish.
I think, I think we're about 15,000 vaccinated out of 26,000.
Right, but that includes people who can't be vaccinated yet, kids. So in terms of the eligible population, it's, it's lower than that. And I don't know what just happened to my slideshow. You guys can't see it anymore either, right?
No, no, we can't. So the number I heard from the health district was 53% with the total population, which would include children and mid, mid 60s, mid 60% for those eligible for a vaccination. Margaret, I, I'd be really interested in how closely you're working with the Tillamook Health Department. And are they making preparation for this booster coming up in September?
Yes, they are. And we got a email yesterday from Kate Grimm, who's the head of the, the co-lead of the Medical Reserve Corps in North County. And she is in close touch with the health department. And the message to Medical Reserve Corps members who have been vaccinators is get ready because there's going to be a lot more shifts.
Okay.
So yes, they are. And in the meantime, they have had an increased demand for initial shots. So, so they have been running a clinic just on Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine to noon for first, first and second shots. But now they're, they feel like they need to ramp that up as well. So yes, there's definitely a big effort. And when we were doing it at full speed, a couple of months ago, we had really good participation from our volunteers, Medical Reserve Corps and CERT volunteers to help with the clinics. We right now have 31, 30 or 31 vaccinators throughout the county, not just in North County, who can help out at the county. So I think we're in pretty good shape there. And then boosters after that.
Excellent. Thank you.
And the other thing I should say is a couple of days before the announcement about boosters for everybody was boosters for people that are immunosuppressed for whatever reason. So that could be people that are on chemotherapy. It could be for people that are on immunosuppressive drugs for other things like rheumatoid arthritis or people with HIV that isn't well controlled.
Are there any questions from the council for Dr. Steele?
That was great, Margaret. Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public have a question for Dr. Steele?
Mayor, it looks like Eric has his hand raised.
Okay.
Did you still want to speak?
Sure. I just wanted to say that I'm on the, the state's website right now and it's reporting that 68% of Tillamook County is vaccinated, that's 64% with series complete, 4.2% in progress. So that's, that's OHA's data that I'm looking at.
And that, and Eric, is that per entire population or is that for eligible?
Well, it looks like it's 18 years and older, so eligible.
Yeah, that makes sense.
21,000 eligible with about 14, five being vaccinated. And Mr. Mayor, if you want, I'll give my quick update on Manzanita and then I need to leave to another meeting.
Sure, go ahead.
So the Manzanita Clinic is back open today and will be open tomorrow. And then starting on, it'll be open normally, just like it normally is Sunday through Friday. So everything is back to normal. However, we are still shifting some resources. So I think there will only be one provider instead of two down to the plaza while we see this surge of patients. You should also be aware that the clinic is going to be closed for a week in September and I don't have that week. Has nothing to do with COVID, but we have to put a new floor in, on the main floor. There's some beautiful slate in the, on the first floor and carpet. That doesn't work in a medical facility. It's got to go. And so we, and unfortunately, we can't have the work done at night and on weekends because of the silica dust that gets generated. So there'll be a week long period and we'll be sending, posting on our Facebook page and other places that it's closed and the reason for it. But we want that clinic to be perfect for all of our North County residents. And so it's going to take a week to get a, a new floor throughout the entire first floor of that clinic and new treads going up the stairs as well.
Great. So Eric, could you send that to us so we can post it on our website? The Manzanita site, that would be great.
I would be glad to do that. We have a new communications manager, John Hay, who works for us full time and is doing a marvelous job. He is a Manzanita boy, grew up part-time in Manzanita and has family up there. In fact, he played golf at Manzanita last night. I couldn't play with him. He loves Manzanita and we're so glad that he's part of our team. And one last thing before I go, I just want to compliment all of you one more time about the great work that the Emergency Volunteer Corps and the MRC do. We, I am so grateful that North County has this group of people taking care of all of you. And I just say Margaret Steele gave my 95-year-old mother her vaccinations. So comforting to me to take her out to the health, out to the 4H building at the fairgrounds and see Dr. Steele with a needle. I'm like, so thank you for what you do. That is amazing work. And I just had somebody bending my ear the other day, why don't we have an EVC in Tillamook? Why don't we have a MRC in Tillamook? We got to have some.
We agree, we agree with that. We totally agree with that.
I agree.
Anything you can do to support that?
Anything you can do?
To support it, to support.
That's part of the public record. My response was, we do not have a Linda Kozlowski or a Margaret Steele. That is our problem in Central County. So as soon as we get some duplicates of you, we can do that. So, Mr. Mayor, unless you have other questions, I'm going to drop off the call. I told Linda that I am more than happy to come back again and give you regular updates. You just fight me and we'll try and work it into the calendar.
Yeah, great. Thanks again for taking the time to speak with us this morning.
It was absolutely my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks, Eric.
Bye bye.
So are there any other questions for Margaret? I think we asked that already.
Just, just one thing. Margaret is president of the EVC. I'm wondering if there's, if EVC is putting out any kind of communication to the community around COVID.
Yes, we will be. We talked yesterday and I'm in charge of generating something for the community that we'll put up on our website and that we'll send out through our mailing list, email list. I need to finish writing it. And I need to talk to the health department, to the, yeah, to the health department and make sure that we aren't, I, I, we need to be working hand in glove with them. We are. And I'm not worried about that, but I have to do that today. So that's on my list and it will be out more than likely by the end of the day today.
Could you send your slideshow and, and when you complete that? We'll, we'll, I'll get it to Layla and we'll put it on the website. So the community has access to both.
Right, absolutely. And do you guys want to talk? I mean, I, I will stick around till the end of this meeting about what, what we can, what we should do and what we can do in terms of the mitigation. Because right now, even if everybody got vaccinated with their, everybody, all the unvaccinated people got their first shot today, that's six weeks down the line before they're immune. And even with, even at that, with Delta, immune doesn't mean you can't spread it. It just means you aren't going to get, hopefully aren't going to get so sick that you'll have to be hospitalized. So this is the time.
Please stay around. Please stay around.
Yeah, I will, I will. But, but this is the time for mitigation, mitigation, mitigation. And what that means is just what's on this slide, masks and distance and hand washing. And I'm happy to enlarge on that.
Yeah, we're going to move into a broader discussion here in a few minutes. So thank you for, for joining us.
I'll stop sharing then.
Okay. We also invited Mary Faith Bell to join us today. I don't know if she had time to join us or not. Is she with us?
She was here earlier.
I see her.
Oh, good.
I am here. Good morning.
Good morning, Mary Faith. We appreciate you joining us today. If you've been following our conversation, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to address our community if you wanted to. We've got 40 people on this Zoom call and we're streaming on YouTube and on our website. So there's a lot of people listening, but we're trying to, because I know you guys are having these discussions too. What can we do as a community leaders to try to mitigate this thing because it's getting a little scary?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, thanks for inviting me to Linda and good morning neighbors. As Mayor Scott said, I'm your neighbor. I live in the Halem and I'm the chair of the, the Board of County Commissioners. I, I agree with Dr. Steele's slide that she was just showing about the, what can we do? I agree with her assessment that, that the things that we can do are, are wear masks, socially distance, wash hands, and in particular, get vaccinated and encourage other people to get vaccinated. And luckily, it, it, I think maybe Eric just mentioned this, or, or perhaps it was Dr. Steele. Luckily, people are, are getting vaccinated in increasing numbers now. There was a, there was a period of time where it had flattened out and, and now the, I think fear is motivating people and, and they're getting vaccinated. And so that's terrific. But, but as Dr. Steele just said, it, you know, it may not be fast enough to keep everybody safe. But, but it's, it's one of the only things that, that's actually going to flatten out the surge. Because the COVID, the Delta variant is just moving like wildfire among the unvaccinated community. And so, so those are the, those are the things, you know, we're back to the basics. I wish there were, I wish there were better answers, but those, those are the answers we have. I can share with you that I was in a very sobering call on Monday with the governor's office. The governor called the chairs of all of Oregon counties to an emergency meeting. And, and at this meeting, she had doctors and hospital executives from hospitals in Southern Oregon and Central Oregon. And where the, the situation is more urgent than it is here yet. You heard from Eric Swanson that, that Adventist Health Tillamook is, is at capacity. They're converting rooms. They have, I think, six COVID patients currently who are very sick. And, and they're, they're understaffed. So, so we're in a serious situation, very serious in Tillamook, at the hospital in Tillamook, as well as the hospital in Astoria is in, is in a very serious situation also. But in Southern Oregon and Central Oregon, it's already much worse. Those hospital administrators and physicians were saying, this is the, these are the worst hospital conditions we've ever seen. And they were talking about having boarding, boarding meaning like just holding, holding people in hallways, on cots, holding people in emergency rooms, boarding people, 20 people, 40 people, because they, there's nowhere to transfer them to. There's nowhere else for them to go. And they were talking about the drastic shortage of medical personnel. The governor was talking about, she's, as I'm sure you've read the news, working with the National Guard to help hospitals in Oregon, but most of those folks are not medically trained. So they might be able to fill in with other kinds of tasks. The, the, our commissioner from Clatton County, our neighbor in Clatton County, asked the governor whether or not Clatton County could, could get some help from the National Guard for their hospital. So, you know, that's right next door. And, and they were talking about, the governor said that she's, she's communicating with FEMA to see whether or not we can get some field hospitals in Oregon. But the problem with that is even if they could stand up some field hospitals, we don't have medical personnel to, to staff them. So that, that, that may not be realistic. That there, some of the doctors from St. Charles and Assante Healthcare Systems were, were saying, these are, we're in danger of a total collapse of the healthcare system. And there, there were commissioners in the room, including myself, who'd never heard that phrase before. And so we asked for clarification. What does that actually mean? Total collapse of the healthcare system? And they said, well, it, it means that we won't be able to deliver the care that we've come to expect in the United States and there will be increased mortality. And so that, that will be happening in the coming weeks. So we're right at the brink now and we may not be able to avert that. So personally, I would say to you, eliminate all risky activities. It, it's, it, it's, none of us want to get sick or have an accident in the coming weeks because our healthcare providers will of course take us in and do everything they can to help us. But in a call with the Civic Advisory Board of Adventist Health this morning at seven, their chief of nursing staff, Kathy Saxon, was talking about, you know, in places like Florida, they're doing triage care where they're, they're ahead of us in this curve. They're doing triage care now where they, they assess, you know, who are the sickest people? And maybe they don't treat the sickest people because they don't think they have a good chance of survival. You know, they're, they're, yeah, so they're, they're deciding who, who to even try to save. So, so this is, this is as serious as this pandemic has been. We're in the middle of it now. It's, it's sad, but this is where we're at. I feel like we've done such a good job for a long time, you know, almost a year and a half, trying to prevent what's happening now. But now it's happening now. So that, that's all I have to say at the moment.
Thank you. Would you be open to a couple of questions if anybody wanted to ask you a question? Any of the congressmen have a question for Commissioner Bill?
I have a question there.
Yeah, Jerry.
Commissioner, you said we should eliminate risky activities. We have a unique opportunity in, in Manzanita that a lot of towns around the country don't have. We can limit to some extent, people coming into our town to visit us. And it seems to me that that may be one of the risky activities. We have to look square in the eye and figure out if in fact we are putting our community at greater risk by not trying to restrict visitors at this particular time. The capacity of the local healthcare system is obviously limited. And bringing in more people to create more crowds where more wet mask wearing is needed, but not always compliant. It just feels like that's a risky business, a risky activity. And I, I'm curious as to whether or not you see an opportunity to protect the parts of the county that are particularly susceptible to big crowds, Labor Day weekend, into the fall, as things get worse in Portland. You know, we, we just, it's a struggle for us, but we need, we need to look at square in the eye and figure out if this is a time to finally say, let's take advantage of the fact that we have a well-informed population here in town that is highly observant and highly compliant, but we don't have that same level of confidence. We can't have that same level of confidence in the people that visit us. So what can we do as a local community or as a county to alter that equation?
Well, anecdotally, I can tell you that yesterday the commissioners discussed the Hood to Coast race. And the Hood to Coast race is scheduled for September 11th and it would come from Mount Hood. Of course, for people who are familiar with the race, it's a relay race, comes from Mount Hood to the coast and would end in Tillamook County at Cape Lookout State Park. And they have been, they, they reduced the number of runners and participants from 1,000 to 650. And, and obviously it's an outdoor athletic activity. However, what we talked about yesterday is that we're very concerned about 650 folks in the day use area at Cape Lookout State Park and more significantly, we're very concerned in if they're about, if there were any accidents or emergencies, the ability for our healthcare system or our ambulance system for our first responders to, to respond appropriately, given, given what we, what we anticipate is happening, what Eric was talking about, that, that the models say that the peak of this. that the models say that the peak of this surge will happen in the end of the first week in September. Is it reasonable to think that our hospitals and ambulance service will be able to respond to emergencies, extra emergencies, in September 11th? And so we've said, we don't think that's a good idea. And we're, you know, I know that people plan and train for the Hood to Coast all year long and it's a beloved event and it's, you know, we took all of that into consideration and still said we're very concerned about this and we think that the timing is bad for this. So there are multiple agencies that permit that event because it goes through Forest Service and BLM and state parks, et cetera. There are multiple agencies that permit that. So, you know, we're not the final answer, but that's the sort of thing that we're weighing right now. Like what are the things that we could say, let's don't do this right now?
Looks like we got a hand raised. Danielle.
Hi, Mayor. Danielle Johnson, a community member, business owner there in Manzanita, and also a parent of three children here in the community, two high schoolers and I have a middle schooler, or I mean an elementary schooler. Basically, this question is a little bit geared towards Margaret, if that's okay. And it's maybe a statement also with a question in there. With schools starting the first week of September and, you know, a mass majority, well, all of them pretty much in the elementary school anyway, are not vaccinated because they're not to age. If a child or a series of children get sick and seriously ill, is Tillamook prepared for that? And is that care that Tillamook can handle? Because I know childcare, when it comes to patient care, is a little bit different than adult. So is that something the hospital's ready for?
Danielle, this is Margaret. I am virtually certain that any child who is sick enough with COVID to be hospitalized would have to be cared for in Portland. We do not have any sort of capability to do pediatric intensive care unit for sure. I don't know if they have pediatrics. There's no pediatrician in the county right now. I think they're about to get one. So that would, those folks and any children that got sick enough to be hospitalized, I think would be in Portland.
Okay, thank you for answering that. And if those hospitals are full, I don't know what that looks like and I don't even want to know what that looks like. But that's obviously a concern as a parent, that if my child has to be, you know, does end up getting sick, you know, that they be shipped over there. And if there isn't any room for, you know, a child, then, you know, that's obviously a concern for me. I just don't know if there's other parents on the call, but these are things I think about. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's not what one wants to hear, but it is the fact. And again, I don't know, but I could probably find out what the pediatric hospital bed situation is in Portland. But I do know that in some other states, Texas, maybe probably Florida, that there have been real shortages in pediatric hospital beds and pediatric intensive care unit beds. So it's a very good question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mary Faith before we move on to a general discussion here with the council?
Well, I have a question that has been texted to me by one of our citizens who is actually in Hillsboro parking lot right now. So she's on the phone and she can't ask the question, although that was an excellent question. She says, I got an email from my employer today where they reported that herd immunity for Delta is ninety-four percent. Have these numbers been heard locally? Is that something that we know anything about? The source of this was the medical professionals in Southern Illinois. I'm wondering, Mary Faith, if you've heard anything about that on your call with the governor? Or Margaret, if you've heard anything like that?
No.
Okay.
No, I wouldn't be surprised, but I haven't seen that number, generally speaking, since it's so much more contagious. It will be higher than we initially thought. The herd immunity for measles, which is the most contagious virus respiratory type disease, is ninety-five percent. So ninety-four sounds high because I know COVID is not, even Delta is not as contagious as measles, but it's going to be pretty high. And I don't think, I think that the medical community over the course of time has kind of given up on the concept of herd immunity and has come to the realization that we're going to be living with this virus, probably indefinitely. And we're going to have to figure out how to deal with it. That was a pretty long answer to a pretty short question.
Well, that was a good answer. I think essentially what you're saying is the percentage is higher, but herd immunity is pretty much out of reach in the near future, no matter what percentage.
No matter what, yes.
Okay, not seeing a bunch more questions. I think what I'd like to do is move this into a general discussion with the council at this point as to what we can do. I know everybody's just tired or frustrated by the last eighteen months of this COVID thing. And, you know, we've made all kinds of efforts here in the community to stop the spread. We've had lockdowns, no indoor dining, mask mandates. We've had access to vaccinations now for a number of months, but here we are in trouble. And if we were back on the old matrix that the governor had a few months ago, we'd be back in that extreme risk category with the number of cases we're getting here in Tillamook. So, you know, there's only so much we can do here in the community and I think we need to talk about what we can do and make reasonably work. Obviously, this Delta virus is highly transmissible and it's on the hunt for victims. And if you're unvaccinated, you've got a target right on your back. And I don't know how to get that message out to people that they need to get vaccinated. It's as clear as a bill to me that it's important. But in a lot of ways, I think it's time for people to take personal responsibility for their own healthcare, which means wearing a mask and getting vaccinated. Those are really the only two weapons we have as individuals to protect ourselves and our families. And we've got to keep getting that message out. You know, I've always felt in my life to try to get people to do stuff that I always tried to lead people to where they should go. It's easier than driving them there with a whip. But in this case, this has been a struggle for everybody, trying to get everybody vaccinated, obviously. So what do we do? We had a state of emergency here for a long time in Manzanita, over a year, almost a year and a half. It makes a statement to the community that we know something's going on and we're aware of the problem and we're monitoring events. And it gives us some flexibility to make decisions quickly. So it's something we might consider today, going back to doing that. Masking up, the messages keep coming in all over the place, as we all know. We're all masked up, we're unmasked, we're masked inside, you're masked if you're vaccinated. It's, who knows what the answer is? I do sense when I see people, and I go downtown every day like most of you guys do, more and more people are putting the masks on. I think they know that we're in trouble. I'm not opposed to, if you guys think it makes sense, to put our mask on signs back up. We get a lot of people up and down Lenida. They seem to be putting their masks on when they go in the stores. Some of them are keeping them on when they're walking on the street. We can ask people to mask up on Lenida in those crowded areas and we can certainly modify our permit, excuse me, for the farmer's market, to ask them to put on masks too, because they get quite a few people up there. Even though we put them up in Underhill and they have a lot more space, it just might be the prudent thing to do. So and when this is all done, I plan to do a community video and report to the community what we've decided on today. Anyway, I know this is all very sobering. So I open it up to each of the councilors to give me your input, what you're feeling right now, what you think we could do.
Well, I'm, as somebody who lives on Lenida and gets to watch a lot of mask behavior, I certainly am supportive of getting our signage back up, making Lenida a mask zone. The hospital information is just very, very sobering. There are a lot of people that are, you know, taking their freedom of choice to decide whether or not they're going to get sick. But there are a lot of people who need hospital services and resources that in a matter of a week or two, may not be able to get them or may have to wait unduly to get them. So that's the part of this that really concerns me is all of a sudden having a medical system that's already kind of at its peak, but maybe getting really worse really soon.
Mayor, I woke up this morning, as the council knows and some others know, I raised the red flag yesterday that we needed to do something, that things were becoming more dire. So I woke up this morning kind of nervous, thinking, oh, boy, you know, I'm going to be ridiculed and considered out of touch. But the meeting, as it's occurred today, has just reinforced my position that we need to be doing something and doing it right now. And so in my mind, it's our responsibility to take a lead, whether that means a state of emergency. I would be interested in hearing Leila's take on what we can do without a state of emergency and what a state of emergency actually provides for us. I do know from a FEMA perspective, there may be some help to us in the long term if in the end we end up going through a process of some FEMA reimbursements. But, you know, from my perspective, we take a more aggressive stand than we even have in the past. Because one of the things I think about is, yes, if you're vaccinated, the symptoms that you are likely to get if you are infected are going to be less than the person that's unvaccinated. But what we don't know, and Dr. Steele can weigh in on this if she chooses, is what we don't know is what the long-term impact is going to be on a person's health from having COVID. We just don't know. And so even if you're vaccinated, we don't want to get it. But yet with the Delta variant, we can't and people are. Just as Danielle's not going to like this, but a recent article I read, and it may have been that Times article this morning, one child who was sent to school without going through a, without isolation before they went back to school after traveling, one child infected eighty students. And that's how rapidly that Delta variant can spread amongst the population. It's scary. I have a list of things that I think we should be doing and including masks on Lenida, including more aggressive signage. I also think the messaging that, along with what Jerry suggested about people not coming to Manzanita, I think our messaging in reality should be, if you're not vaccinated, we really don't, we welcome you at some future time, but right now we're not really interested in seeing a lot of unvaccinated people in Manzanita. And because it does affect our healthcare system and we're on the edge right now of a breakdown, as we just heard. I also, and I know this isn't going to hit the mark for some people, but I do think that we should be looking at vaccinated, that people should verify their vaccination status before they come to Manzanita, if they're coming to a short-term rental or a hotel motel facility. How we do that, I don't know. And I know that it's probably not going to be very well received, but I don't understand why we would want people who are unvaccinated coming to the community. I don't maybe go as far as what Jerry is suggesting is, you know, trying to close our borders. But I do think we're in a serious situation here. And as a city council, we need to take a leadership role and provide the specifics so people can follow them to try to protect our population.
Well, I don't think we can close our borders, but we do have certain levers as the local government to make our borders less welcoming and less porous. And every time I hear people talk about mask wearing, we're only talking about mask wearing because we're afraid of crowds. Well, if we're afraid of crowds, why don't we do something to reduce the likelihood that we'll have crowds? So I applaud you, Steve, for suggesting trying to use our role as a regulator of a business that invites people into our community on a regular basis to use that role to insist on at least visitors being vaccinated. But we're still going to have crowds on Lenida that are here because we invite them to be here. We attract them. We want them here. So we are responsible for the very condition that causes us all to be concerned and scared of. So if we're going to create the conditions that put us at risk, we need to be very careful about how we proceed. In the short run, this is a short-term crisis. And in the short term, I'm not sure it makes sense for us to be welcoming in a lot of short-term visitors. And if that sounds harsh or unfriendly or naive, just consider the fact that we're blessed with some natural advantages here to withstand this pandemic. We have a very, very highly educated and alert and concerned community that has by and large really done a good job of listening to the messages and adhering and taking good care of themselves. It's a largely aging population that is very sensitive to vulnerabilities. And, you know, all of those advantages sort of go away when you say, come on down from Portland and crowd our main business district on a regular basis. And we'll try to get you to mask and if you mask, then, you know, maybe we're okay. But it just feels like we, in the short run, have some opportunities to change the dynamics in town and would return us to the favorable conditions that we have. And we're heading into a part of the year, not immediately, but soon we'll be in a part of the year where we don't expect big crowds. So maybe it's easier to be more aggressive along those lines as we head into October, November, December. Maybe the challenge is right now. I don't know. And I don't have any easy answers and I'm glad that Steve has come up with some good suggestions and I'd like to work, perhaps maybe Steve and I, we can work together and talk with Leila and try to get some thoughts together before the next council meeting. I don't think we're in a position to do anything dramatic today other than better signage on mask wearing. But I just think that we have to remind ourselves that mask wearing is what you do downstream from the problem. Upstream from the problem, you might want to do something that doesn't create the very condition that mask wearing becomes so essential for. I mean, if, you know, Mike, as you said, you go downtown every day. If the only people downtown were the people that live in Manzanita, there wouldn't be big crowds on Lenida. I'm not suggesting we're ever going to be in that situation, that we have a main strip downtown that is only for locals. I am suggesting that right now we have a local crisis in the middle of a county crisis, state crisis, national crisis. And locally, we're the ones that are in charge of trying to figure out locally what we can do. So locally, I think we have to do whatever we can do to preserve the beneficial conditions that exist for the local people in this community. And I think maybe along the lines of what Steve is suggesting and maybe at least considering going further so we don't get caught flat-footed. If we think about it now and things are horrible in October, we won't be flat-footed in October. But if we don't think about it now, then I think we could get caught off guard down the road.
Well, one of the main purposes of doing this this morning on such short notice is we start thinking about it. At times, we don't have a lot of time here. And one of the frustrations for me is with this latest surge, there seems to be little government direction or political government direction or political will to go back to any stringent lockdowns like we had at the beginning. And for those of you that were around, as most of us were, when this started and we did have the lockdown and the the pitting of neighbor against neighbor from full-time residents and second homeowners and short-term rental people was horrific. We tried to discourage second homeowners from, you know, we were in lockdown for like ninety days, I think it was. And we discouraged, well, we told second homeowners, you want a sheltering place down here with us? Fine, come on down. Or stay in Portland or wherever you're from. And what we ended up with was continuation of people coming for the weekend, weekend after weekend, and then going back to Portland during the week to go to work. And it pitted neighbor against neighbor and it was absolutely ugly. I hope we can avoid that in the future. I don't think we've recovered from that since, but
Can I give my two cents before we move forward? I, because I, obviously, this has been a, this has been a strong focus for me and I really, and I'm, you know, I'm immunocompromised, so I, I am at a high-risk level. So it's not only for the city, it's a personal issue. And, but I, I think we have to think carefully about what we do as a community. I it's interesting, as I've been sitting here, I've been getting texts from people and from first responders that are out there and four ambulances have been deployed this last hour, two of which are COVID. So it's, this is, this is serious. It's a very serious issue and we need to look at it as a serious issue. And we need to think it through. I don't, the, I don't, I, I think we need to take a leadership position, but I think we need to be very careful that it's thoughtful that we think about it and probably major decisions not be made today, but be made at the city council. So essentially, my thoughts are, I think we need to go to a state of emergency immediately. That gives us the flexibility to respond quickly. Secondly, I think we need to really focus and, and, and really hit hard mask wearing. I'd like to see the, Eric and his team be out there proactively encouraging people to wear masks. I know, you know, this is another issue we've been through before. We're not going to arrest people. There's nothing we can do to do that. But having friendly encouragement from a police officer is not a bad idea. I think it's really a good idea. I think we need to think about comprehensive steps that we would consider in our, in our council meeting. And I think we need to take into consideration the short-term rental industry. I think I'd be, I know Danielle's got her hand raised and I'd be really interested in, in her input and the, the industry's input. We don't want to go back to neighbor against neighbor, which as Mike pointed out, was clearly where we were before. The environment is not going to be a shutdown environment. We don't have leadership from the state in terms of taking significant actions. And so we may, we may need to step up and do some things that, that help keep our community safe. But I think we really need to think, I think we need to think those through. This is a really serious situation. It is not to be taken lightly. I, you know, I, you've heard me say this before and I'll say it publicly. I think all the staff needs to be vaccinated. I think anyone that is public-facing needs to be vaccinated. And I think we need to really, really, really be stringent in the mask wearing in any kind of public environment. I know we'll be talking about the farmer's market. It's clearly something that we need to look at closely. At a minimum, we should have mask-wearing and distancing at the farmer's market. And I, I just, I just think we, we need to think carefully about what we want to do. Make, make, think about it over this next couple of days, do some things immediately and then, then look at Leila to help us come up with a comprehensive plan that we can implement and discuss in a public, in our workshop, Wednesday workshop and in our public, in our public council meeting.
Well, you know, we've, we've done a lot of great things through this pandemic to support our community and we've made some mistakes too. At one point, we suggested no indoor dining and to have the restaurants do it voluntarily, which absolutely blew up in our face. Because we're concerned about indoor dining and when we're down here in a small community without this support from government, like the state government making mandates, it's, it's really hard to, to do things interlaterally by yourself. One thing I'm thinking about is, and I think most everybody's got this message, is community gatherings within the city. As we all know, the library does their library sale normally on Memorial Day and they reschedule it to Labor Day and the last few days they have canceled it. I don't know if the city needs to make direction that we don't have like a library sale. Do we do Manzanita this year? Should the Hoffman Center, who, which recently reopened about a month ago and has a full calendar of events at the Hoffman Center again, is that a smart thing to be doing right now? It's
Well, I think that's part of a comprehensive plan and getting input from the community and and understanding what our limits are in terms of what we can do. But what, how we can be most effective in working to make our community as safe as possible.
May I make a quick comment? And I appreciate everything that's been said and don't disagree with anyone other than I don't, I'm not sure I'm willing to wait until our next council meeting in September, which is
Well, that's true.
That, that, for me is not acceptable and I going to spend some time to think about this. First of all, I think there are some things we can do right now that are really not all that controversial, but yet show some leadership. But if, if we are going to think about it, I prefer that we think about it at today's Thursday. So if we were to meet again on Monday or Tuesday, not wait weeks to revisit this issue because
I would support that.
And I, I did send out an outline of the, to Dr. Steele that I think some of you did receive. And I, I don't have, I mean, the, the effective immediately stuff that I have in there, I, to me, they're, most of those are no, no brainers that we should be doing. And I don't know that I need to wait till next week to consider implementing those. Basically, it's mask on Lanita, mask at the farmer's market and a, and a more aggressive message about vaccination and the severe conditions that we're currently in. And that, that can all be done through Leila's office. And Dan, I think I saw was on the call today, so I, I would, you know, I would really like to see the messaging on our sign boards. There's a cat. Just the messaging that we're putting, the messaging that we're putting out on those sign boards, I think should be maybe ramped up a bit and a bit more aggressive. And I don't think, and I'm kind of with Jerry, I don't think it's inappropriate. I'm sorry, but I don't think it's inappropriate at this point to suggest that people, we would like you to be vaccinated. You come to Manzanita. It's your right not to get vaccinated. I totally understand that. That's a personal decision that you make and some people virtually cannot. But for those who can't, it's also our right to say that based upon scientific evidence and a whole lot of it, that the risk to our community by the unvaccinated people in terms of our medical facilities and the spread of the disease is beyond what we're willing to accept. So that's where I'm at.
Well, let's, let's take a couple of hands raised here. Let's take them. Danielle? It has been up there with her hand raised for a minute.
Hi, Mike. Thanks. Thanks for, again, this is, I, I'm so blessed to be a part of this community and the information and having meetings like this. I just thank you to everyone involved that got this together. I really appreciate it. So I just had a couple of things, you know, I'm sort of in the middle, obviously, right? So I'm a community member. I'm also a parent in the community. But then I also own a short-term vacation rental company in Manzanita, so I advocate for both, obviously. But, but number one, in all honesty, keeping my community safe is obviously my number one. It's very important to me. And I have, you know, bared this ride as we all have since this started. And, and so basically, my, I just have a few things that I'd like council to think about when you're thinking about you know, a possible, you know, slowdown of what's going on. I really want you guys to take a few things into consideration. One, the amount of fake vaccination cards that are going around the country right now is ridiculous. I've read and also seen on various news stations about that being a real thing right now. People are faking those. So I don't know what asking for vaccination cards is going to be a, a good way to verify that somebody's been vaccinated, number one. Plus, we're not necessarily qualified to, to, to do that. But again, that's, that's just my thoughts on that. I don't think, and I'm not going to support at all a complete shutdown of the city. I don't think that's what you guys are, are wanting to implement anyways, but I just don't think that that's a good thing considering you have, we will then be pushing the people that would come to Manzanita to other close by cities that are in our same county. So it's not going to really do any good. Because they're going to go to Rockaway, they're going to go to Cannon Beach, they're going to go to Wheeler, Nahalum, wherever. They're going to vacation. They'll find a way. I feel like if it's spread out, it's, it's a better thing, just in my head anyway. And then enforcing masks on Lanita, awesome. We are educating and setting expectations for our guests and we have been since this all started. And I'm going to talk with our marketing team about trying to find another way so that it's not mundane sounding to really drive at home that when you're coming to visit, you need to follow these rules. And so that, that people are understanding that. I really think a big sign at Lanita saying, go home, we don't want you in our town again, is not going to go over well. It didn't go over well the first time. So finding a way to kindly say things, I am a big advocate for in, in that regard. But if we do some type of shutdown and no one else does it, it doesn't make any sense because you have so many day-trippers and county roads within the city limits that aren't going to have those rules. And so it's concerning. And I know there's, this is complicated. It's not something easy that we're going to be able to, to figure out. But they only work, shutdowns only work if everyone does it. And at this point, I don't know that that's something that the governor has in her plan. So definitely a consideration. And then also another consideration, Multnomah County, which is a huge part of our visitors here. Right now, they have an eighty percent vaccination rate. So, so their rate is higher than ours. I think that you have to consider this, people that are visiting from this area. The calls we get into our office to make reservations or people that are coming out, not even kidding you, nine times out of ten, we're fully vaccinated, our whole family is, you know, they'll have little kids with them that aren't. But for the most part, everyone that's coming here seems to have that to say. And so me as a rental company, I feel very confident in letting our visitors continue to keep coming. But with the expectation that they understand masks are going to be required and it's going to be the only thing that stops this virus is to socially distance and to wear your mask. Until we can get over the hump. Yeah, that's, that's the biggest thing. But the day-trippers and, and things like that, we're not going to be able to stop those. And that's
Danielle, can I ask you a quick question? Sorry to interrupt. I feel like I'm back on the short-term mental work group here. We had a lot of these conversations over the last eighteen months. So Danielle, I guess I'm interested in, I see Amy's got her hand up as well and maybe wants to weigh in too. But what is the month of September looking like in your industry? Can we anticipate a full load of people coming?
September, I will tell you this, we have had a lot of cancellations in the last two weeks for September, and I think it's just a natural fear of people seeing the numbers go up, seeing our hospital rates go up. So we've had a lot of cancellations from people saying, you know, it's just not safe to travel right now. I think people are a lot more conscious of this, this go-around than they were the first time. So we are definitely seeing a lot more proactive from people. But September is pretty steady. It's not as busy as August, but it, at this point, it is pretty steady, which it always has been. But again, we are getting those cancellations. We are, we've also had an increase in cancellations. Just a few anyways, as far as the last week or so, of people that have been in contact with someone who has been diagnosed with COVID and has called and said, just to be safe, we're not coming. So like I said, I, I feel like people are more conscious this time than they were last time, which is reassuring for me anyway.
Thank you, Danielle.
You know, Danielle makes a good point. When we shut down at the beginning of this thing, we did it in conjunction with all the coastal counties and we all worked together. And it held together pretty good. It got a little sloppy at the end when we reopened, but it held together pretty good and it worked. You know, we, we, any action we take on short-term rentals within the city limits of Manzanita doesn't impact any of the short-term rentals that are south of the golf course or north, north of Nahalum Road because they're out of the city. And there are hundreds of short-term rentals out there that we have no control over. And if we don't get buy-in from the county to do a uniform approach to something like a shutdown, which it, it just isn't going to work, in my humble opinion. Dan, Dan Hagan, you've had your hand up for a while. We'll go, and then I'll call on Amy.
Thanks, thanks, Mike. I, I just wanted to mention that in the last week, seven, seven major events in the area have all been canceled. The organizers have taken that on themselves to go ahead and cancel. You mentioned the book sale. There was a big concert out at the winery that's been canceled. NCRD and the Pine Grove have both canceled their reopening celebrations. So we're seeing a lot of that and I kind of suspect that more are going to follow suit. I know someone mentioned the Hoffman Center. I know they're, they're discussing several of their events, perhaps postponing or canceling. So as Danielle said, a lot of people being way more proactive this time and not even waiting. So that's, that's something.
So it sounds like if the city, if the council made a as part of what we're going to do here, suggested to all organizations like the Hoffman Center that they consider canceling their upcoming events, they would probably jump right on board because they're already talking about it. So all we can do is give them some direction maybe and everybody would probably fall in line because everybody understands how much trouble we're in right now, I think. Amy, your turn.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to say that pretty much everything Danielle said is what I was going to say. There is no way we're going to be able to control the day-trip people. And, you know, the, the other vacation rentals that are in the outskirts or in the county, if we're not all in the same boat, it's, you know, it's pointless to do anything. I, you know, we, as vacation rental management companies, have great control over the people that come here and we have, we can send a message out. And I think that that's going to be very important for the, the managers, management companies and individuals who manage their own home. And maybe we can come up with something, we're working on a, a good neighbor. I think Tillamook County just did it, but it's a good neighbor.
Policy.
Policy, thank you, Danielle. That maybe we can incorporate the masks and, you know, anything that we want to say to every guest that comes in. I, I just think that asking for, like Danielle said, asking for vaccination cards is not, not the answer. It's, I don't think that's going to do us any good. There's, there's, as we've heard today on this call, that there's only sixty percent of the people in Tillamook County that are vaccinated. So, you know, are you going to ask everyone that comes into Manzanita for their card? No, that's not going to happen. So I just, I don't feel like that's the answer to this situation. But I appreciate the, everyone talking about it and you know, getting, getting somewhere very quickly where we can all feel comfortable with visitors and our local residents as well. So that's, I, again, appreciate being able to speak and, and mirror what Danielle said and, and mirror what Danielle said and, and the mayor too.
Mayor, can I, uh, just follow up with, uh, with Amy? Um, because I think she brings up an interesting point and fortunately we have the short-term rental work group in place. I don't know if Joe is on the call today or not, the chair of the work group. But, um, I recognize that probably vaccination status is, is not going to sail here. But what, one of the things that we could be doing through the work group is insisting that owners, agents of short-term rentals, notify all incoming folks of the status of our healthcare system, ask as best we can that people coming to Manzanita be vaccinated and the masks are going to be required both inside and outside. And we have fortunately through Judy Wilson's good work, have developed a pretty complete list of all other owner agents in the community. And that could go out as early as, you know, soon as you can write it, it can go out. So you know, I would add that to our list of things that we notify people coming to the community that we are in a bit of a problem here with our healthcare community and that, um, we're asking them to come vaccinated and we're asking them to wear masks when they do get here. And I appreciate Amy's and Danielle's comments. Like it's kind of a, you know, we're in a negotiation phase here. Ask for a high number and then maybe settle on something a little bit less. So it's, uh, you know, in some respects, the notification process would be maybe the, the next best answer.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that concept. I think we could do that quickly. And I think people are listening now as everybody said, everybody knows this is a, this is a problem right now. And, uh, and, and that's leading people to take action as opposed to, as I said earlier, to, uh, to push it. I'd rather lead than push. Now you're talking about fake vaccination cards. I read an article, you know, the timbers are, require vaccination cards to go to the soccer game. And there are already conversations about people coming up with fake cards so they can go to the game. I don't know, anybody could, unless you had a national passport. I don't know how that vaccination card deal is going to work. And you know, a little community like us, I, I just don't think we can get into that game. But we could certainly send out a very positive message that we expect people to be vaccinated to visit our town. That's easy to do. Anyway, um, let's see if there's any more questions from the public and then let's bring this back to the council and see if we can come up with what we want to do today. Do you have any, any other, anyone from the public has any input before we go back to the council, come up with some decisions here today?
I have no hands raised, Mayor.
Could we get some input from Leila in terms of her perspective regarding it?
That was the next words out of my mouth.
Good, oh, good.
Go ahead. Do you have any words of wisdom for us this morning?
Um, well, other than I appreciate this conversation deeply and, um, the leadership that you all are taking with respect to this as well as hearing what we have, um, what other folks have to say in terms of the impacts. I went ahead and prepared a resolution for the council to consider today to reinstate the state of emergency, including, um, implementing the mask zone on Lanita. And so that's been drafted and posted for your consideration today. And I, you know, based on the conversation today, I, I, I get the feeling that someone may make a motion, um, to adopt that. I also, um, Dan Wenzel, our public works director is here as well. I've been coordinating with him as well as our chief of police, Eric Harth, that should we, uh, make that decision, should you make that decision today, we'll be ready to go, um, and get the signage, everything really rocking and rolling, um, immediately. So I just wanted to let you know that that, that resource is available and ready to go. And then I think, you know, I appreciate the really thoughtful discussion around the vaccination status. I think, you know, y'all need to continue to have that conversation, but I do think implementation, um, should be at the forefront and we're ready and able to support, um, getting additional information out to short-term rental owners through the notification process, if that ends up being, um, the case. It just, uh, we have a great short-term rental committee chaired by Joe Newhouse, and I know that we can, um, we can get something moving on that in short order. So staff is well-prepared to, you know, implement the, the mask zone on Lanita. I think the other thing I, I would also encourage, and I reached out to Cliff Young, who's here with the market today. I believe they are anticipating and ready if the council does, uh, decide to make a motion today to amend their permit. I've already drafted the changes to that as well. One other thought is that, um, the Manzanita, uh, parade that we just approved at the last council meeting, they did come in with a change to that permit, which we can discuss at the next council meeting. If you decide that you would like to amend that permit as well to require masks, we have time to do that, um, because the event is September 11th and our meeting is on the 8th.
Okay, thank you, Leila. Let's, uh, let's kind of come up with a conclusionary. Been at this for a while, but, uh, you know, when we started this, we did I think that was my, uh, girlfriend in the box here talking to me. The, um, if you remember when we started, we did a COVID call every Friday morning after the county call to stay in touch with what was going on. And things weren't as rock and rolling as they are now. And, uh, maybe it would make sense for us to go back and do that every Friday or any day of the week, pick your day until we get through this. Cause I, I, I think we all have a gut feeling here that things are going to get worse before they get better. And, uh, we were doing those calls when Tillamook County had six cases cumulative. And now we're knocking off 25 a day and the hospital's full. So it's, it's even more critical now than it was then. So I just throw that out there. Maybe we should go back to doing that weekly until we get over the hump here. Then we can really stay on top of things. I would suggest today, I mean, if you guys want to make the motion, I think we ought to go back to the state of emergency. It puts the community on notice that we, we're on top of things. We know what's going on and things are serious. And, and yet to get our mass zone set back up on Lanita and ask the farmer's market to put on masks. And, uh, we can ask the short-term rental group to put together some stuff to get out to, to those people. And start with that and get together and meet again next week and possibly go back to doing that every week until we get over the hump. That's kind of where I'm at at this point. And over time, we may be incorporating some other things. Anyway, your thoughts?
I'm sorry. When, when you say meet again next week, you mean a, a council meeting, not an informational meeting? You, you mean another special council meeting to consider?
We did a, um, a special city emergency, special city council meeting once a week during the state of emergency. Until towards, I think you were part of that, Jerry, towards the end.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's, it's not a, a work session, information sharing, but actually an opportunity to make decisions. We, yeah, we had talked earlier in this meeting about meeting again as early as Monday. And I just want to make sure that that's where we're talking about in the short term, another special council.
I'm talking about meeting next week, but possibly continuing every week going forward like we did before. And it's a city council meeting, we can make decisions. If you remember the format, we, uh, each city council had input, city manager had input, and we had all the city department heads had input as, as we were working through the COVID. But frankly, the COVID situation right now is much worse than it ever was during the past 18 months, in my opinion. It's, it's sobering. And, uh, go ahead.
Yeah. Can I, uh, uh, suggest a couple of things? One is I'd like to move the meeting away from Friday. I think I suggested earlier about, uh, maybe a Wednesday meeting. That's when the state report actually comes out is on Wednesday.
Well, that's fine. Could be any, any day of the week we, we want.
It would allow us to do things, you know, weekends, especially as we get into September, October, the weekends, um, are decidedly more busy in Manzanita than, um, during the week. So I would, I would like to see us, uh, do that. And I, I also think, and I mentioned this earlier as well, if Leila could put together a, a short briefing about what the role and responsibility of the council is in an emergency, under emergency conditions. Whether our decision-making is affected by that and what authorities we might have that we might not otherwise have. And I would be, I see we have one hand up, but I would be prepared to offer a motion when you're ready.
Yeah. Well, if you remember when we were in state emergency before, it allowed me as mayor to make some decisions without calling a city, city council meeting. And then when we did have our regular city council meetings, if you remember, you guys basically approved what I did. And it started out, it started out, I declared the state of emergency, if you remember on a Sunday morning, I gave everybody, I think it was 24 hours to get out of town. And, uh, I did that unilaterally at that time, if you remember.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And that worked well for us. I just think it would be helpful, at least for me, maybe not the rest of the county, but, but I would prefer to see what an emergency order actually represents to the council relative to the rules and regulations and the law.
I'm sure Leila can put that together with, uh, help from James, our city attorney. We can do that. Yeah, no problem. Cliff's got his hand raised from the farmer's market. So go ahead, Cliff.
Uh, hey, everybody. Thanks for putting this together. Um, and so I guess uh, one thing that I just kind of wanted to make sure of, uh, now that kind of masks seem to be coming back to what is termed the mask zone on Lanita, if in sort of the city council or general city's announcement of the return of masks, if they could like also really articulate that they are required at the farmer's market. So at the farmer's market, we have some copy to lean on in terms of saying the, the city really explicitly states that at the farmer's market, you must wear a mask. Because, I mean, I had as of last week, uh, put out some signs strongly recommending masks to customers and vendors. But it felt a little bit challenging without the full weight of a governmental body. So I would just want kind of in writing very succinctly and clearly put that like the Manzanita city government really needs farmer's market attendees and vendors, staff volunteers, X, Y, and Z to wear masks. But otherwise we're totally on board with that. I think it's a good call. Given the situation and we're prepared to do sort of whatever else is needed to keep functioning for the last few dates of our season. But, uh, otherwise, uh, thank you. Yeah.
So Cliff, let me ask you a question. How many people have you seen wearing masks in the last week or two, just voluntarily wearing masks up there? Have you seen some compliance with that?
So I guess I'm pretty happy to report that mask wearing has increased exponentially without us even saying anything. The limited push that I gave to everybody last week in the absence of the government, the state government, or any government really saying anything about outdoor events seemed to, to prompt pretty much, I mean, from where I sat, the, the, not total majority, but a good majority of customers were wearing masks of their own volition. And I think that can only stand to increase now that there's some more force behind the mandate. And uh, yeah, I hope that answers your question, but it, it seems like it's really trending in the right direction in terms of people, uh, taking responsibility for that, for that on their own accord.
Yeah, that's, that's good to hear. So do you have some masks up there that you could possibly hand out to people or can we get you some? I think Dan Hague has some.
Yeah.
His department does. Some of those paper masks, you know?
Yeah. So I've been in touch with Leila, um, and I've picked up hopefully a bunch of them either today or start showing up. And they will be free, uh, at the info booth for anybody who needs one, wants an extra one.
Okay, okay. Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you for your input.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
So Steve, did I cut you off? Are you going to make a motion or I didn't mean to cut you off?
No, I'm, uh, but I, one thing before we do that, uh, Leila, I, what I'd like to do is to move to adopt resolution, whatever the number is. That Leila had suggested she's put together for, uh, the Lanita uh, and a couple of other things, but I don't think I've seen it. And I'm not willing to move to approve unless, can you share a screen, uh, showing that resolution?
Yeah, thank you. I haven't seen it either.
Well, let's take a minute. Bring it up and we'll read through it.
While she's doing that, um, can I also, and I got a quick note from, uh, Dan Hague indicating he'd be happy to help the short-term rental work group prepare some language to go out to the short-term rental industry. And again, I don't know, I didn't, I mentioned Joe and she didn't jump up. So I'm thinking she's not with us, but, um, maybe Dan can reach out to Joe.
Leila Sam is on the line too, so she might be able to do.
They're often together, I understand.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
I sent her a note and let her know you volunteered her for work. She's not here, that's why, so.
And along those lines, one of the things I'd like to say, once we decide what we want to present, to send a letter or an email out to the res, to the residents of the city of Manzanita. I think it's really important that we communicate this, uh, to both local residents or local residents and short-term or second homeowners as well.
Y'all seen my screen now?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and as I said earlier, after we get done with this today, I'm going to do a community video that Josh will post on the city's Facebook page. And I must be a pretty popular guy. The last one I did had a thousand views. So that helps get the word out.
It does. It really does. Could you make that a little larger, Leila? That's
Surely try. Now you can see my, um, Is that a little better?
Oh, much better. Thank you.
Not super elegant, but, and I apologize if you didn't get this. I posted it, but may have failed to email it to you. So my apologies. Scroll down a little bit, that works. Section one. Go ahead and scroll to the second page, barring any objection.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's it.
Leila, it looks like this is pretty consistent with our previous, uh, emergency orders. Including, uh, I, did it include the city manager being responsible for making all decisions essentially?
Yeah, yes, it did. I, I, I began this with the old one, so.
And that's, that's been vetted by, I'm sure our legal, our city attorney. And I, I just want to make sure that when we declare an emergency, that we're following the rules of a declared emergency, I guess.
Well, my reputation is to be a rule follower. True. My title's on here. You can bet that we're going to follow the rules.
Well, I know you are. I, I, I didn't mean it the way you took it, but, um, yeah, no, I just want to make sure that if there's some specifics within the emergency declaration that we are aware of them and what are, how far our authority extends.
So Steve, what was your motion?
Well, I can make the motion now. And you're sure about 2106 because it seems like I've said that number before. We've had that number before.
Yes, this is what happens when, let me double check.
How are we going to address the farmer's market? Are we going to include that in the emergency order as part of the mass zone or do that as a separate amendment to their permit?
What I thought I would do is offer, uh, an adoption to, for resolution 21, whatever. And to be further amended by the farmer's market issue, uh, further amended by the, um, the order to the short-term rental work group to prepare document, documents to send to the work group, uh, to the short-term rental community. And I thought I would offer an amendment to, um, encourage vaccination in our signage, but maybe we don't need to do that, that that doesn't require actual amendment. So that's what my plan was to do. So that's what my plan was to do.
So give it to me again. How are we going to cover the farmer's market?
That's going to be amended in the resolution.
Well.
Can I make a suggestion to that? We actually have a permit where we, um, make requirements on the market. So we can either add it to the resolution, but I think the most efficient way is to amend their permit because we can put conditions on the market. And I can share with you if you'd like, um, what I've already drafted for that. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, it would be.
Probably easier then just to have a whole separate motion and, um, vote, um, amending the permit.
That would be my recommendation. So I've just added effective today, basically all patrons vendors are required to wear face coverings during the farmer's market and to practice social distancing until I'm tying it to our state of emergency, assuming it passes. Uh, the state of emergency declared by the city of Manzanita on August 19th, 2021 is lifted.
Well, that's, that sounds like the way to handle that. And then they can have that piece of paper and show it to people.
Well, and then we could do that also, uh, similarly on the Mazzanita permit.
Yeah.
And we, we probably should notify them now that that's going to happen. I don't think there's going to be changes between now and September. In other words, give them a heads up that that's going to happen.
I think it's a good idea, Steve.
Yeah, for sure.
The permit, uh, Cliff, again with the farmer's market, um, is live music going to be permitted, uh, going forward, given that the farmer's market is included in this kind of emergency mask and social distance zone?
That's a really good question.
I don't know that I'm qualified to make a decision on music one way or the other. If they're outside, I'm not a doctor. I don't know if that's a big deal or not.
Is Margaret, is Margaret still with us? Margaret, do you have any sense of the difficulty with live music is that often it is unmasked and often it is pushing out?
Right. From, from what I've seen in the few weeks that we've had, live music, the way that the chairs are set up, they're quite far away. And I think that, um, medically, it's probably not very high risk. And I think, you know, you could, I could make an argument both ways, but I think that if the people who are listening are masked, I think it's okay to have music, but I, I don't have any knowledge, knowledge about that. That's just my feeling based on everything else I know about the situation. I think if you wanted to be hyper, hyper, hyper careful, that you would probably say no, but I don't think that's necessary.
That's helpful, Margaret. Thank you.
So we're not even putting out chairs for people to listen to music. Um, so.
Okay. Thank you for asking that, Cliff. That's, that was a good, really good question. Thank you.
One comment that I would make though is, um, the live music will attract groups of people in close proximity to one another. At least it has the potential to do that versus groups moving from one booth to another. So the farmer's market may want to consider putting some sort of oversight, whether that's individuals from the market monitoring that site, that area. And in, to ensure social distancing, that would be my one concern is the reason you have music is because it attracts people and it would attract people into a more, um, group setting than it might otherwise be at the market.
Um, can I, so my suggestion for that would be, um, to have some sort of signage, both when you come in where it says masks required, and then also at the, um, place at the pop-up tent where the musicians are, have signs that say, please stay six feet apart while you're listening, while you're enjoying the music or something like that.
And Leila, is 2106 the correct number?
No, no, it's not. Thank you. Um, so it's not. Nina, just help me. And it should be, uh, 20, 2110. So I've changed it in my version. So that's, that's where we are.
So after reading the resolution and all this discussion, I think really the simple adoption of the resolution is probably all we need to do. If Leila agrees and then there's nothing else in there, everything else can be done administratively except for the change to the farmer's market permit, which should be a separate motion. Is that how you see it?
That's how I see it. Thank you.
So I would move to approve resolution 21-10 declaring an emergency in the city of Manzanita.
Second.
Yes, but moved in second to approve the state of emergency resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say aye. Okay. Thank you, everybody. I think that's the prudent thing to do at this point. So let me have a motion to amend the, uh, net permit for the farmer's market to include, um, uh, masks.
So moved as was shown to us, um, in the information, uh, Leila showed to us before.
Can I have a second? Did I have a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. So if we moved in second to, uh, to require a mask mandated in the farmer's market, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you want to pose? Yay. Thank you, everybody. Uh, okay. One last thing before we go, so that we stay on top of this. Is Wednesday work for everybody? And we can do an early call on Wednesday next week. Say nine o'clockish. Does that work, Leila, for you? And then we can decide, see what happens in the next week, see how things are going and just stay on top of this thing. And if necessary, we can make a decision next Wednesday if we want to continue with weekly calls. And, and as you remember, we did this before, we always kept them within an hour. Sometime they were less than an hour. It was just to stay on in touching on top of things and things seem to be moving so fast right now that it might be the prudent thing to do.
Wednesdays are probably good because they'll follow the Tuesday county meeting. And I think keeping in, yeah, a connection with the county is really important as well. Um, my only question is, I don't remember those being city council meetings. I remember them more as workshops. I'm not sure that we made any decisions during those meetings. So it's just a clarification.
That is correct.
That was a workshop?
They were workshops.
And I, and I think that's adequate. I mean, I think that worked really well. It was an information sharing. It's like our workshops before city council.
I, um, just a comment. I think that it's adequate as a going concern of a weekly meeting, but it sounds like we are, are we not wanting to give ourselves the latitude to make decisions as a body next week when we have a meeting? Cause if, if next Wednesday is just going to be a workshop, it means the actions we're taking today are it until our council meeting. And I think we're in a really dynamic situation that's changing by day almost. And, um, I would hope that next week we can take action if we need to.
Well, then.
That was my point about what we can do from an emergency standpoint, because it might be that we can simply direct the city manager to do certain things if she has the authority under the emergency order to do those things. And that was the reason I was asking for a kind of a layout of what, how far we can go with the emergency order. Because.
Why don't we do a city council for next Wednesday and, uh, and, and have the answer to Steve's question next Wednesday because it would be a lot easier. I think if we could do it administratively.
I can even see if I can invite the city attorney because I understand what you're asking, but a lot of the questions end up being unique and specific. So I can give you a broad sense, you know, of what authorities we have, but ultimately kind of any bigger decisions I would run by a city attorney irregardless. Um, so I just want to put that out there that, um, you know, there's broad sort of, um, things that we have in play, but specific things we will want to run by the city attorney. So I don't know that everything is going to fall into a neat sort of white paper on what the differences are. Um, I can try to have that ready by next Wednesday. Um, I have to talk with our city attorney about that. So we'll get as far as we can, but it might be beneficial, uh, if we're going to be having this kind of discussion to invite him to a discussion. Cause it, it just takes a lot of time to go back and forth. And there's, there was a review period that is just out of my hands.
Well, that's a good idea. Why don't you call James and see if he's available next Wednesday at 9:00 AM. And then for this meeting, let's make it a special city council meeting where decisions can be made. Instead of a workshop. Everybody okay with that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Um, do we have any other issues we need to talk about today? Or this has been a, an excellent meeting. I, I really want to thank, uh, our three guests, Dr. Steele and Eric Swanson from the hospital and Mary Faith from joining us today. Uh, I, I think we, uh, did some good work today. So is there anything else before we adjourn? Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you.